I'd like to call the order, the January 3rd, 2023 Regular Meeting of the Chino Valley Planning and Zoning Commission. Would you all please silence your phones? I fooled you, didn't I? All right, we're gonna stand up and do the pledge. Commissioner Passiak's gonna lead us.
Through the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic.
Thank you. We have a quorum, but we're missing one member.
I don't know whether it's one or two or not.
Commissioners, would you like to come up and sit in?
He's probably out plowing snow, I'm imagining.
He might have been out really early this morning, too.
Yep. All right, looks like we have a full commission. We're gonna do the consent calendar, which is item C. I do have a couple, at least one correction on the minutes, but other than that, does anybody else have anything that they need to change on the consent calendar? So on the last page, under information items, it says that I attended the meeting, the general plan meeting at the school, which I did not. I talked to somebody who did attend that meeting. I didn't go because I didn't want to have a problem with a quorum. If we could change that, that would be good. All right, so I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar as written, other than the change in the minutes.
You approve.
Yeah, you make a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Multiple seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, consent calendar is done. Okay, so we're gonna move forward to item D1. FP 2022-05, a request by Tom Luzio on behalf of Granite Basin Engineering for a final plat for Old Highway 89 to divide approximately 4.17 acres into two lots with an average lot size of 2.09 acres. Property is located at 19997 and 20047 Old State Route 89, Chino Valley. Has anybody in the commission had any discussion with anybody about this item? Okay, cool. Nathan?
Is this on? Okay. Thank you Chair and Commissioners, Bethan Hain, Planner with the Town. Tonight, the item before you is a request for a final plat on Old Highway 89. I believe the applicant is not in attendance tonight. Roughly four acre subject property is located on 1997 and 20047 Old State Route 89. Here we have the location of the subject property. Now, this final plat is a request for two lots, each being 2.09 acres each. Surrounding the site is the Del Rio Springs PAD, which the subject property, as well as the adjacent property to the north, is not a part of. Now, subject property is zoned appropriately for the proposal of the final plat, with it being single-family residential one acre minimum. The proposed final plat is also in conformance with the general plan, which designates the subject property for medium-density residential, two acres or less. And it is conforming. And so now before you is the proposed configuration of the final plat. So we have two resulting parcels, each of them being 2.09 acres each. Both of the residential properties, the resulting residential properties will be served by well and septic. Main access to both of the lots will also be from Old Highway 89. Any deviations from this plat, we'll need to go through the public process again. So a neighborhood meeting was held on November 28th, 2022, and we had two neighbors that were in attendance. Some topics of concern included drainage and runoff, proposed access, and further possible division of lots, and the obstruction of the surrounding landscape. Town staff did not receive any public comment regarding this project. So staff felt that it was important to note that, as of this morning, condition number two was changed to the new condition that was provided and mentioned at the previous planning and zoning commission. And I think Senior Planner Will Dinjies has a handout for you guys.
Alrighty, and with that, staff recommends just pause for a second there.
And with that, staff will recommend that the Planning and Zoning Commission forward to the Town Council a recommendation of approval for this final plat. Any questions?
Who's the commission have questions for staff?
Only question I have is, what would be the access off Old Highway 89?
So from the way that the applicant had explained it to me, it would be directly off of the highway. So this is Old Highway 89 along the two parcels. And so the understanding is that each of the lots will be directly accessed off of that Old Highway 89.
Mr. Chairman, I just checked your bylaws, and it says that you guys cannot hold this hearing unless the applicant or authorized representative is present, or the town has written permission to hold the hearing in the applicant's absence. So I'm wondering if we maybe postpone this and see if he shows up?
He's not here now, then.
I don't believe so. So maybe we can pause this and go to the next item and then come back?
We can just rearrange the agenda, possibly, and then if he doesn't come at that time, we'll just postpone it. Okay?
Thank you.
All right, so we're going to move item D1 to the second part of this meeting and move forward to item D2, which is ZC 2022-10, a request by Jay Bates to rezone approximately 20 acres of land from agricultural residential five-acre minimum to single-family residential one-acre minimum. This property is located on the northeast corner of West Road 3 South and South Road 1 West in Chino Valley. Has anybody in the commission had any discussion with anybody about this item? Okay, cool. Nathan?
Is this on? Okay. Thank you Chair and Commissioners, Bethan Hain, Planner with the Town. Tonight, the item before you is a request for a final plat on Old Highway 89. I believe the applicant is not in attendance tonight. Roughly four acre subject property is located on 1997 and 20047 Old State Route 89. Here we have the location of the subject property. Now, this final plat is a request for two lots, each being 2.09 acres each. Surrounding the site is the Del Rio Springs PAD, which the subject property, as well as the adjacent property to the north, is not a part of. Now, subject property is zoned appropriately for the proposal of the final plat, with it being single-family residential one acre minimum. The proposed final plat is also in conformance with the general plan, which designates the subject property for medium-density residential, two acres or less. And it is conforming. And so now before you is the proposed configuration of the final plat. So we have two resulting parcels, each of them being 2.09 acres each. Both of the residential properties, the resulting residential properties will be served by well and septic. Main access to both of the lots will also be from Old Highway 89. Any deviations from this plat, we'll need to go through the public process again. So a neighborhood meeting was held on November 28th, 2022, and we had two neighbors that were in attendance. Some topics of concern included drainage and runoff, proposed access, and further possible division of lots, and the obstruction of the surrounding landscape. Town staff did not receive any public comment regarding this project. So staff felt that it was important to note that, as of this morning, condition number two was changed to the new condition that was provided and mentioned at the previous planning and zoning commission. And I think Senior Planner Will Dinjies has a handout for you guys. Alrighty, and with that, staff recommends just pause for a second there. And with that, staff will recommend that the Planning and Zoning Commission forward to the Town Council a recommendation of approval for this final plat. Any questions?
Who's the commission have questions for staff?
Only question I have is, what would be the access off Old Highway 89?
So from the way that the applicant had explained it to me, it would be directly off of the highway. So this is Old Highway 89 along the two parcels. And so the understanding is that each of the lots will be directly accessed off of that Old Highway 89.
Mr. Chairman, I just checked your bylaws, and it says that you guys cannot hold this hearing unless the applicant or authorized representative is present, or the town has written permission to hold the hearing in the applicant's absence. So I'm wondering if we maybe postpone this and see if he shows up?
He's not here now, then.
I don't believe so. So maybe we can pause this and go to the next item and then come back?
We can just rearrange the agenda, possibly, and then if he doesn't come at that time, we'll just postpone it. Okay?
Thank you.
All right, so we're going to move item D1 to the second part of this meeting and move forward to item D2, which is ZC 2022-10, a request by Jay Bates to rezone approximately 20 acres of land from agricultural residential five-acre minimum to single-family residential one-acre minimum. This property is located on the northeast corner of West Road 3 South and South Road 1 West in Chino Valley. Has anybody spoken to anybody on the commission with this item? Okay. Oh, it's you again.
All right, we'll get started. So thank you Chair and Commissioners, Bethan Hain, Planner with the Town. Tonight, this item before you is a request for a rezone for a residential property, which is located at northeast intersection of West Road 3 South and South Road 1 West. The applicant Jay Bates is in attendance tonight. Now, the 20-acre subject property is located at the northeast intersection of West Road 3 South and South Road 1 West. The property is located to the south of an existing slaughterhouse along Beefway Ranch Court. Now, this request is to rezone the property from its current zoning of agricultural residential five-acre minimum to single-family residential one-acre minimum. The surrounding area is AR5 to the south and the east, as well as multiple-family residential in Mobah Home Park directly north to the site. And to the west of the site, we have Yavapai County. Now, the rezone to SR1 will be in conformance with the general land use map, which designates the subject property for medium-density residential, two acres or less. So the applicant is requesting a rezone with the intention of developing a 15-lot, one-acre each subdivision after entitlements for the rezone is granted. So in front of you is the proposed configuration for this subdivision. Neighborhood meeting was held on November 30th, 2022, and we had nine neighbors in attendance. So topics of concern that arose during this discussion were drainage, runoff, and flooding, proposed parking configuration within the subdivision, decrease in water availability, and increased traffic on South Road 1 West, as well as the increased density of the neighborhood, and decreasing home values. So as noted before, there is a slaughterhouse to the north of the subject property. Staff will require at the final plat stage from the applicant that the applicant will include on the front page of the final plat an odor disclaimer, as well as that the developer must supply buyers with a noise and odor disclosure acknowledgement to sign. To date, staff has received one letter in opposition of the project. And based on staff finding, staff recommends that the Planning and Zoning Commission forward to the Town Council a recommendation of approval for the rezone. And with that, any questions?
You have any questions for the town staff while they're up there, anybody?
One question, how long has the packing plant been in business?
Chair Commissioners, I don't have the exact date off the top of my head, but I believe it's been since the 70s, late, early 80s.
That would be consistent with my memory. I've lived here since 1979, and that thing's been there ever since I've been here. Pardon? Okay, thank you. 1971. All right, Nathan, thank you. We'll probably call you up. Okay, is the applicant here tonight? Would you please step up to the podium, state your name? Yes, my name is Jay Bates. I'm part of Wright Homes. It's a Wright Homes project. Okay, so maybe
Tonight, the item before you is a request for a final plat on Old Highway eighty-nine. Um, I believe the applicant is not in attendance tonight. Roughly four acres subject property is located on one nine nine seven and two zero zero four seven old state route eighty-nine. Here we have the location of the subject property. Now this final plat is a request for two lots, each being two point zero nine acres each. Surrounding the site is the Del Rio Springs PAD, which the subject property as well as the adjacent property to the north is not a part of. Now, subject property is zoned appropriately for the proposal of the final plat, uh, with it being single family residential, one acre minimum. The proposed final plat is also in conformance with the general plan, which designates this subject property for medium density residential, two acres or less. And it is conforming. And so now before you is the proposed configuration of the final plat. So we have two resulting parcels, each of them being two point zero nine acres each. Uh, both of the residential properties, the resulting residential properties will be served by well and septic. Main access to both of the lots will also be from Old Highway eighty-nine. Any deviations from this plat will need to go through the public process again. So a neighborhood meeting was held on November twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two, and we had two neighbors that were in attendance. Some topics of concern included drainage and runoff, proposed access and further po- further possible division of lots and the obstruction of the surrounding landscape. Town staff did not receive any public comment regarding this project. So staff, um, felt that it was important to note that as of this morning, uh, condition number two was changed to the new, uh, condition that was provided and mentioned at the previous planning and zoning commission. And I think, uh, senior planner Will Dingy has, uh, has a handout for you guys. Alrighty, and with that, staff recommends. Just pause for a second there. Uh, and with that, staff will recommend that the planning and zoning commission forward to the town council, a recommendation of approval for this final plat. Um, any questions?
Who's the commission have questions for staff?
Um, only question I have is what would be the access off Old Highway eighty-nine?
So from the way that the applicant had explained it to me, um, it would be directly off of the highway. So this is Old Highway eighty-nine along the two parcels. And so the understanding is that each of the lots will be directly accessed off of that Old Highway eighty-nine.
Mister Chairman. I just checked your bylaws and it says that you guys cannot hold this hearing unless the applicant or authorized representative is present or the town has written permission to hold the hearing in the applicant's absence. So I'm wondering if we maybe postpone this and see if he shows up.
He's not here now then.
I don't believe so. So maybe we can pause this and go to the next item and then.
We can just rearrange the agenda possibly, and then if he doesn't come at that time, we'll just postpone it. Okay?
Thank you.
Alright, so we're going to move item D one to the second part of this meeting and move forward to item D two. Which is, um, ZC twenty twenty-two dash ten. A request by Jay Bates to rezone approximately twenty acres of land from agricultural residential five acre minimum to singly, single family residential, one acre minimum. This property is located on the northeast corner of West Road three south and South one, South Road one west in Chino Valley. Has anybody spoken to anybody on the commission with this item? Okay. Oh, it's you again.
Alright, we'll get started. So thank you Chair and Commissioners, Beth and Hank Planner with the town. Tonight, this item before you is a request for a rezone for a residential property, which is located at northeast intersection of West Road three south and South Road one west. The applicant Jay Bates is in attendance tonight. Now, the twenty acre subject property is located at the northeast intersection of West Road three south and South Road one west. The property is located to the south of an existing slaughterhouse along Beefway Ranch Court. Now, this request is to rezone the property from its current zoning of agricultural residential five acre minimum to single family residential, one acre minimum. The surrounding area is AR five to the south and the east, as well as multiple family residential in Moba Home Park directly north to the site. And to the west of the site, we have Yavapai County. Now the rezone to SR one will be in conformance with the general land use map, which designates this subject property for medium density residential, two acres or less. So the applicant is requesting a rezone with the intention of developing a fifteen lot, one acre each, um, subdivision after entitlements for the rezone is granted. So in front of you is the proposed configuration for this subdivision. Neighborhood meeting was held on November thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two, and we had nine neighbors in attendance. So topics of concern that arose during this discussion were drainage, runoff and flooding, proposed parking configuration within the subdivision, decrease in water availability and increased traffic on South Road one west, um, as well as the increased density of the neighborhood and decreasing home values. So as noted before, there is a slaughterhouse to the north of the subject property. Staff, uh, will require at the final plat stage from the applicant that the applicant will include on the front page of the final plat, an odor disclaimer, as well as that the developer must supply buyers with a noise and odor disclosure acknowledgement to sign. To date, staff has received one letter in opposition of the project. And based on staff finding, staff recommends that the planning and zoning commission forward to the town council, a recommendation of approval for the rezone. And with that, any questions?
You have any questions for the town staff while they're up there, anybody?
Uh, one question, how long has the packing plant been in bus- in business?
Chair Commissioners, um, I don't have the exact date off the top of my head, but I believe it's been since the seventies, late, early eighties.
That would be consistent with my memory. I've lived here since nineteen seventy-nine and that thing's been there ever since I've been here. Pardon? Okay, thank you. Nineteen seventy-one. Alright, Bethan, thank you. We'll, we'll probably call you up. Okay, is the applicant here tonight? Would you please step up to the podium, state your name?
Yes, my name is Jay Bates. I'm partner in Wright Homes. It's a Wright Homes project.
Okay, so, um, maybe you could tell us about what you got going on there?
Um, the configuration is fifteen lots, one acre lots. Um, the ingress egress will be pavement and the road will be dedicated to the town when we're finished. We've also dedicating, uh, forty-five feet, I think it is, along Road three south uh, to the town of Chino Valley for, uh, extension of Road three at some point in time in the future. And we also have an ingress egress lane in the front, um, of the subdivision turning in to the cul-de-sac.
So what, what are you gonna put on that property?
We're manufactured home dealer.
Oh, okay, thank you. Um, does anybody have questions for the applicant? Go ahead.
Yes.
Is it public water?
You'll have to pull your microphone down.
Are you gonna be hooking up to public water and sewer?
Oh, well, and septic, sir. It's, it's way too far away, I think. It's actually, I think, a mile, over a mile.
Yeah, I think it was quite a distance if I remember the report.
I think it's Center Street.
Alright. Anybody else have any more questions? Oop, right, thank you. We may, we may call you back up. Hey, I'm gonna open this portion of the meeting for public comments. You're gonna have three minutes to speak. We have a fair amount of people here tonight. On the ground rules haven't changed since the last time we did this. Um, you step up to the podium, state your name, um, let us know what you're thinking. You get three minutes to do that. Pe- please be polite and concise. Um, if you agree with a continuous stream of statements there, just say, I agree with the guy before me. We keep notes on all that, so it doesn't mean your voice isn't heard. It just means that you don't have to repeat what's been repeated four or five times before that. So, uh, with that, who would like to step up? I will call whoever comes up. Well, you have people to speak already, okay?
Heather Reinhardt.
Hi, good evening. My first time doing this. Thank you for having me. I'm normally not a person to complain about anything. As a patriot and libertarian, I believe people have the right to do whatever they want to do with their property. Having said that, uh, I tried to figure out why this zoning, rezoning actually bothered me. And I think it's because, um, it doesn't make sense. Uh, right now, there are subdivisions scattered throughout Chino, which I like. We have open spaces scattered throughout Chino, which keeps it feeling like country, um, a little bit of country outside of the city. But the main reason is home prices that are not, the homes are not selling right now. They're sitting there. I don't see a point in creating a new subdivision. There's already homes on the market that are not selling. I am also a little bit concerned that we've got subdivisions already on that corner and there's houses in between. And I feel like if we keep putting subdivision by subdivision by subdivision by subdivision by subdivision, we're gonna lose that open space. I feel that there should be, you know, some open spaces for wildlife corridors, whatever else, just to keep it a little bit more country feeling in between. So, um, although I normally, like I said, I would not complain about someone using their land how they want, I don't think another subdivision on that corner in that area is appropriate. And I don't think, I would hate for the land to be developed and properties to just sit there unused, so. That's my.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
You gotta wait your turn. Alright, who else? Oh, you call them?
Hello, Happy New Year. Thank you. Um, my name is Suzie Bailey. I actually live in the county across, uh, for the last seventeen years um, on West Road three south, at eleven fifty West Road three south. Um, I'm also a licensed real estate agent in the, uh, area for the last twenty-two years. I sell a number of properties that are unsubdivided as well as subdivided, so I just kind of know a little bit about the process, but a couple of points on this one that come up that, that I sort of knew the intention of this property when, and when it was purchased. Um, it had sat for a number of years. Uh, it was a sort of an estate sale when that twenty acres finally went at three hundred and twenty thousand, which was a good price. Sixteen thousand an acre was a good price for it. I understand the developers' choice to utilize that property in whichever way that they want to, being that they're manufactured home, uh, distributors, that that would be their likely in, in, and most easy use of the property to put manufactured homes on them. However, if you take a look at the wagon wheel ranch as an example for what's been done in that area, um, back in those days, that was a site built only, um, same basic zoning, SR one, uh, brought in infrastructure of sewer and water, um. The water is closer obviously than the sewer, uh, based on what the town has been doing as far as bringing sewer in. It's not quite as close. It's a mile point eleven, I think, um, from this parcel. The, the concern is the county road with a forty feet on one west is already very tight. Um, been driving that road for seventeen years. Um, you can barely fit two cars on it and people tend to drive on it a little bit too quick. Now we're gonna increase that traffic by a number of people in terms of, of not just the owner, owners, but the people that will be coming to visit and, and, and going in and out on that ingress, ingress. Um, that's a major concern. The other major concern is that this particular owner, um, has had a history, and, and I don't know if you're familiar as a council, uh, with Archer Meadows, but there was a cease and desist order, um, for Wright Homes LLC, uh, for Archer Meadows, for them not filing a public report and working as an unlicensed entity as a developer. The county allows for a minor land division of a split like this for, for a parcel twenty, twenty acres would be a, a four, four split. That would be in keeping with the type of housing and particularly with the county around there. We have unimproved road. West Road three south has been my responsibility and my husband's responsibility for the last seventeen years of taking care of it. We're sort of the orphan, orphans out there. Road one west is taken care of by the town. Um, as I say, it's pretty narrow. You're gonna bring in a lot more people on there. It's, it's only twenty-two feet of, of pavement on each side of that easement. Um, there's those concerns. There's also the concerns of water. If they're gonna work off a well and septic, we've got ADQ that's got to determine whether or not that's gonna be an environmental impact, very important. Uh, we've got the fact that we need to know that they're gonna do a proper public report on this as a subdivider. That's very, very important to know, um, and that that's done legally and properly with all of the considerations of being a subdivider. Um, not just that we can zone it to one acre minimums, that we need to make sure that that entire project is done properly. Um, the other thing is, is, I'm sorry, I'm probably over. Yeah, but the other thing is, is that, that the water, the water table, I don't have the information right now on the pump test. I'd be interested to know what that well is making and also whether or not your position as planning and zoning, if this gets done with the county or, or, or if all of that basically takes place with the county, or if it takes place with the town council at the next meeting on the twenty-fourth. So would that be something you could tell me before?
We can answer questions right now. If you'll give somebody else a chance, when we get all done with this, we'll try to respond to some of that.
Okay, I just was wondering, cause I didn't know, I know this is P and Z, but I didn't know at what point the twenty, the twenty-fourth is gonna bring up any of this sort of thing, or if it's all done at the county level.
We'll let town staff talk with that, about that in a few minutes. Thank you. You'll get your chance in a bit. You can't respond right now. Okay.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for, uh, having me here tonight. And, uh, I'm a resident. I live at.
Would you please state your name?
Brad McGee. I'm, uh, I live at, uh, thirteen fifty South Road one west, right across from Beefway Ranch Slaughterhouse. And I drive up and down the same road that these people do every day. Um, I agree with her. It's very narrow and the speed is, uh, is not monitored properly. Um, there's a lot of high speeds going down that road and it's never managed and the road is very narrow and it's not up, up kept very well. So my concern is what is the city of Chino gonna do about that road when they subdivide that property and there's more people living in that area? That's my first question. The second question I have is, I live across the street in Yavapai County. I'm on, I'm on five acres. I'm only allowed to subdivide it in two and a half acre lots. I'm not allowed to subdivide it into one acre lots. So I'd like to know why, um, that is not consistent with that area in that neighborhood, that you're allowing a twenty acre property to go into one acre lots when it should be two and a half acre lots. And then my, uh, my last question is, they've already drilled a well there. There's a well been drilled. And I would like to know if they're gonna be drilling individual wells for each one of those properties, or if that one well is gonna feed, uh, as, uh, all of those properties inside. Um, I know that neighborhood very well across, uh, sorry, north of Beefway Ranch. It is actually, um, uh, all on city water as well. So to pull city water over to that property, uh, isn't, isn't, I can't see that as being a big deal. So, um, and obviously the water table is a concern. So those are my three main questions.
Alright, thank you. I'll get the hang of running this contraption in a minute. Okay, DeeDee. Ma'am, you need to step up to the podium. Tell us who you are.
Virginia Reinhardt. I plan to read. I didn't plan, but I'm up here. I, I wanna read a poem I wrote while I was a sophomore in high, in college. And it comes from a different perspective than, uh, some of you, but I was on a hill in Los Angeles at night and I looked out and all I saw was city. It went on for miles and miles and miles. And as I stood on the hill overlooking the city, my heart was saddened and filled with pity. Going are the trees in the forest so green. Gone are the fields now seldom seen. Going are the animals so wild and free. Those that remain, their destiny. And I know that probably doesn't bother a lot of you, but coming from Los Angeles, I was thrilled, absolutely thrilled to find a big buck in our front yard when we came home. And, uh, we've had a, a long horn, a pronghorn, um, what do you call it? Sheep or goat, whatever, jump across the road in front of us on the way to church. And this was just throwing to me and I just hate to see everything developed, but.
Thank you. DeeDee?
Larry Yenter.
Recognize some people in here. Glad they came. I am Larry Yennis. I live at eleven fifty-four West Road three south. Been here for fourteen years. In ele- first eleven years, I've had to have my well pulled because the pump went out. I don't know if you folks are aware of it, but on a well that has water, there's rust marks. If there's rust, there's water. My well has dropped one foot, six inches every year. Chino Valley Aquifer can't handle all this. You're gonna go dry. There's a state official that says you got ten to fifteen years water availability in the state of Arizona. I would like for you to come up later and explain to me.
Sir.
You've done an impact study.
Excuse me. Address the commission.
Okay.
And that'll be the end of that, okay? Thank you.
There is a well. Has it been tested for uh, full-time, everyday chemicals in that water? Has there been tested for arsenic? The city knows we got an arsenic trouble. They've had to shut down some wells and rely on others, trying to mix it together to make it palatable to human beings. I pride you in that. And I'm going to request the mayor and/or maybe the inv- uh, uh, people that write articles for the newspaper to follow up on how we're doing with that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I don't have any more, but there may be.
Okay, so if you would still like to speak, please raise your hand. I'll call on you. Step up to the podium. You'll get your opportunity later. Don't rush me.
John Garden, Chino Valley, Chair. Ladies and gentlemen, I want to wish everybody a very safe and happy and prosperous New Year. Uh, let's hope that two thousand and twenty-three, I'm gonna try and be optimistic, is better than the last two or three. Uh, couple of things, uh, I go to a lot of board meetings. I, I, we're behind the eight ball on infrastructure in this town. I've known that for a very long time. Uh, I've spoke with Mister Bates and other developers in the community over the past few years, and every time I ask about tying into the sewer system, it's like, well, it's a little, it's not really cost productive. And, uh, but at the same time, uh, we're not gonna be, be able to improve our infrastructure unless we do something, uh. I do know a little bit about it, that, that if we tie into sewer, it goes into our treatment plant. And then the treatment plant then injects that back down into the aquifer. It doesn't run off into leach lines or, you know, so forth. So that's one of my concerns with newer developments, not, plus I remember what happened back here back in oh eight and oh nine, uh. We rented a house out here that back in oh six, oh seven, brand new tract off of Essex. They were selling for about one seventy back then, a buck seventy, and then they resold for eighty, eighty-three thousand dollars. A buddy of mine bought eight of them and retired on the rentals. And then the other thing is to, uh, uh, the developer, whatever, uh, manufacturing company he's using, I'd like to know the name of that to make sure that there's no conflict of interest with any, uh, certain individuals that maybe be tied into this town. And I want to thank you all very much for my time.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else like to step up? Yes, ma'am. Uh, you have to come up to the podium, tell us your name, then you can speak. Please pull the microphone down so that everybody can hear you.
Hello, my name is B Garcia. And I wanted to say that I agree with all the speakers today. And also, I would just like to say that as retirees, we save all our money to come and live in a place that is rural and nice. And then you add manufactured homes and it just ruins it for all of us. Because we, we came out here for the purpose of having a country feel, not looking out your back door and seeing all these manufactured homes. Now, someone at the, at the other meeting we had at the site had recommended that, um, if they could put a block wall up. And so he had said, if you want a block wall, you build it yourself. Now, I, I just think that's wrong and that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Boy, she didn't use any time up either. Look at that. Hang on, making notes here. Okay, anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Mary Seal. Um, and I do want to say what, I agree with what people have said here, um, especially on the water issue and, uh, and, and sewer. Um, I also wanted to know how does that fit in with the general plan that we're working on now and should these decisions be, being made at this point, or is that something that needs to be postponed? Since we are working on the general plan now and whether or not we want to put more developments in and where we'd want to put more developments, um, in that. So that's kind of my question on that. If, is this the time to be doing it?
Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody else? All right, well, I'm going to close the public comment portion of the meeting for this item. Who wants to tackle the question? Will or Dave Bathin?
Send them go from there.
Okay, so there's been several comments about manufactured homes and houses. Can you please explain to the folks um if Chino Valley has a differing opinion on manufactured home and housing and the as far as the building codes and the zoning codes are concerned?
Chair members of the commission, um currently our town zoning code does not restrict in single family development, the ability to construct um si- site built versus manufactured homes. Uh, so there, there's no uh yes or no on that. That, everything's allowed in the single family and ag zoning districts.
Okay, so just to be, just to clarify, and then you correct me if I misspeak, that any place in Chino Valley can have a manufactured home put in it unless it's in a subdivision that specifically says that they're not going to do manufactured homes. Um, is that correct?
That is correct with the exception of multifamily or um specific manufactured home park zoning designations.
Okay, so basically no difference. It can put, be put on any piece of private property.
That is correct.
All right, thank you. Um, been lots of comments about inadequate roads. Um, how can we address that?
Um, our public works official is not here tonight. Frank, he is still on the tail end of his vacation, but as far as roads itself, a lot of that, as far as project specific will be a direct uh addressed during the civil review process for this uh development. We're only talking the land use tonight. That'll become part of the next stage of the development process. Um, but they'll be responsible for improvements based on the impact of their um development for new local road created and then adjacent roadway improvements.
So basically, if I understand correctly, there are some uh requirements that the town is going to require for this project. And I noticed a dedicated right away and some other things. Does is that, uh, I didn't mention anything about a traffic study. Is that going to be required or is this not enough people to do that?
It's not enough people.
Okay, that's kind of what I thought also.
And generally, Public Works doesn't require improvements for roadways that are not directly in front of their property. I haven't seen in almost two years, I haven't seen us require like this roadway all the way up to the main connector road be improved by a developer who's just developing a piece.
Yeah, and I agree with that. Long as I've been sitting on the commission, they're responsible for developing the property that they're wanting to do, but they're not required and have not been required to re-improve the roads beyond that point. That's um, that's the way things have been here. Okay, so there was a, several concerns about water, which we hear frequently. Could you please address that?
Sure. Um, so the development itself is proposed to be on well and septic. Um, the, I believe there was a gentleman that talked about city water being close to this, that is City of Prescott Water, uh, and not Town of Chino Valley. City of Prescott will only serve properties that are designated as a Chino Valley Irrigation District reimbursement area. And I, this property is not considered one of those. So the City of Prescott has no obligation legally to serve this property with water. Um, and then town sewer is, the closest extension is up by Center Street halfway in between Center Street and One South.
And I know this isn't your area of expertise, but you've been pretty familiar with this. Is, could you give us a somewhat of a ballpark figure for advancing sewer and water?
Uh, quoting Frank, um, Public Works Director before COVID, it was about a hundred dollars a foot and post COVID, this world we live in now is anywhere from two hundred to four hundred dollars a foot, depending upon who you get.
Okay, a foot?
A foot per utility.
All right, thank you. Um, let's see. Oh, how about fitting in with the general plan?
Yeah, um, at the moment, the current general plan um remains as it is until the um the upcoming general plan is completed. Um, that is, I, I believe that is targeted to be completed at the end of June, following a review period that ends in about November and
So in November, it goes to the vote of the public. But in the meantime, we have a general plan in place that we have to rely on and we don't have a way um to stop all of the development and wait for it.
And we don't have any idea at this point whether it fits or doesn't fit with anything.
No, we don't even have a draft to land use map yet.
Okay, but more than likely from past history, that area is not going to change very much.
Probably not.
Okay. Um, let's see, what else did I write down here? Okay, anybody else have questions?
I have a couple, couple of that I want to ask them. Um, they mentioned about one well. Is it one well for the whole um plan or is it one individual wells for the uh acreage?
I believe it is individual, but we can have the property owner developer answer that.
And I was going to save that question for the developer. He might have more information for us.
And also the brick wall, um, the block wall of showing their property, do you know if that's going to be a
none of that? At, at this point in time, we do not, but developer could answer that for sure.
Another one too. I bet we've got a general plan, but I don't, I don't know about that. So it's fine. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, can you bring up on the screen attachment A, conti- conditions of approval? So this is in the paperwork that was submitted for us tonight. And this has some more information and explanation about what the roads are going to be doing on the property and in front of the property. If you wanted to take a minute to read through that and study it out, we'll leave it up on the screen for you to look at.
And if I make a, maybe make a small edit here, Chair, um stipulation three B says West Road Three North. We are talking about West Road Three.
Yeah, I had that in my notes. I was thinking, boy, that's a moroing in the town. Okay, um, anybody else have any questions for staff at this point?
Beth Ann, all the county property to the west, those are, what size lots are those?
Um, I believe they should each be about two point five each. Um, I can pull up that slide to showing the aerial. Um, but if it happens to fall within county jurisdiction, county happens to have, the planning and zoning department happens to have their own set of zoning regulations that are separate from ours.
That was one of the questions I forgot to ask was the county and Chino Valley, the zoning rules for either entity are different, I'm assuming.
That is correct.
Okay, so they don't overlap. They don't have to coincide with each other. They don't have to be in lockstep.
Correct, those are zone two point five.
So I think they're roughly each acre. So these squares are probably about two point five each, but I believe counties zoning district is RCU two or something like that.
All right, any other questions?
I have a question. Um, looking at the page where it says uh summary of attendees, uh comments and concerns. Um, how has the developer addressed these concerns of inadequate drainage, increased flooding, um parking plans, decreased water, increasing water availability and also uh the waiver incident? So.
When we bring them back up here, we can, okay, we can grill them on it. All right, any other questions for staff?
They're saying that you're saying to have the developer have them sign when they purchase the property, they're aware of the possible odors coming from the slaughterhouse. Is there any kind of paperwork that needs to be addressed to new owners or new people looking at the property about the existence of so many dry wells in the area? The possibility that their wells might go dry and they might have to start hauling water?
Um, so is the question more about the slaughterhouse odor concern or about water?
Going dry in the area that they might have to haul water? Like, if you're moving close to an airport, you have to be aware of noise. If you're moving to an area that there's possible toxic, you know, like in Dewey, there's some areas when you look at areas where the old mining that there's high arsenic levels in the area, you need to be aware of. Is there any kind of requirements that there's so many empty, you know, dry wells in the area that you might be? Just because you have good water today, you might not have good water tomorrow?
Right.
Chair Commissioners, uh, that, that would be satisfied with the assured water supply that the developer is going to be required to get through the state ADWR. Uh, they're required to get a hundred year assured water supply for the development in order for it to be feasible.
But you and I know that's still paper water. It's not guaranteed that there's water there. I know there's a lot of lots in that area that do not have wells that everybody hauls water already.
So as, as part of his study, so he's required to do paper water, but he's also required to do a physical availability and determination study. So that, that's part of his pump test. And then he can speak on that as far as what the findings of that pump test from that well and uh the estimation based on the hydraulic reports.
But with the granite fingers that run through that area, just because that well's got water, doesn't mean the one, two acres across from it's going to have water? I mean, does he have to prove that there's a proper well on each and every acre before he gets his development?
You would have to prove that there's adequate water for the full twenty acres.
Any other questions? We still may call you back up again.
All right.
The, all the road things? Yes, absolutely. Okay, so now's an opportunity for the developer to come up. And actually, we call him the applicant to come up and try to answer some of these questions, plus some of the ones that we've got. All right. Um, a couple of things, uh, it will be well You need, you need to face this way. Okay, I was just trying to get my stuff together with everybody had the questions. I will be well and septic. Uh, we will have an assured water supply by the state of Arizona shortly. It's been a process that we went through. We did do the well. I can't remember the, the gallonage per minute, but uh, there was an arsenic finding of point eleven billions, I think it is. Uh, the acceptable is ten. So we're one point over. Um, to mitigate that, uh, we're supplying um full filtration systems for every house. Um, it'll fully filtrate the entire house. We tested that. It got down the arsenic from point one, one, two, zero. And everything else was acceptable as far as minerals and, and everything else in the water. So are you intending to have one well for the whole entire property or one per lot? One per lot, yes. Okay. Um, so we answered water quality and, and again, just to remind everybody, the state Chino Valley does not have the authority nor are they in charge of any water issues. It's all through the state of Arizona. We don't have control of our water, unfortunately. Okay, so um let's see, what else did we have? Oh, what was the manufacturer of the uh homes that you're going to use? We're a licensed dealer for Cavco and Champion Homes, both. That was one of the questions that was asked. Yep. Um, does anybody else have any questions?
Will there be a brick wall built around the facility or the residents?
No.
Is there a reason why there wouldn't be one?
Um, yeah. It's not required and it's twenty acres.
I understand, I understand that.
And it's open. And I mean, I think that, you know, some of the things that have been, been indicated here from the things people like is the country feel and being able to see out and look out and have a view and, and enjoy it. And I don't know why we'd build a wall around that. That wouldn't seem like counterproductive. Uh, secondly, when you consider home prices, if you look at Prescott, uh, it's pretty unaffordable for entry level families or a lot of retired people. If you look at Prescott Valley, it's getting to be the same way. Uh, Dewey land is hard to find. Uh, Chino Valley is kind of the next bastion that's affordable housing. So a lot of people that move here or looking for jobs here or want to move here, um, we provide that kind of balance between the expensive houses and nothing. And we build a nice home on the acre. If you've seen, we've done probably seventy-five houses in Chino Valley over the last several years. Um, we're done, well, went business two thousand seventeen, my two partners, and we've done two hundred houses in the last five, five years. Um, we got a great, great reputation. Uh, one person indicated the cease and desist order. Uh, that was on the nine houses on Perkinsville Road. We had seven of them sold to every riddle for part-time housing for their professors and two houses less. There's nine houses in a row. We didn't need a public report. When every riddle failed out of that program, we had nine houses. We ceased, we stopped ourselves and we pulled the signs, got a public report and then reviewed and resumed uh selling the houses. Somebody wrote in to the state and said that we didn't have curbs and gutters. We didn't have sidewalks, which weren't required. Right. And uh, as far as the public report was concerned, we, we didn't need it. And then when we did, we got it. So that was a moot issue that, that was four years ago, I think. I'm going to read down the list of uh comments that were at the public uh meeting, neighborhood meeting, I mean. So one of the first ones was inadequate drainage and increased runoff from the site. You're going to have this all has to be designed by a civil engineer, am I correct? Yeah, anything that we do, it's a forming use under, under current um planning. Uh, any drainage issues or any kind of drainage on the lot property has to be approved by staff and by the engineering department at the town. We can't just go willy-nilly and start putting houses on a piece property without addressing drainage, water, um, septic and all the, all that stuff. So, yeah, it'll be conforming completely. Okay, so um again, but the civil engineer, you're having a civil engineer lay this out and set up all of the drainage stuff. ERC is who would be doing that property. All right, thank you. And then um there was a concern about parking or garage is going to be there? Is the parking going to be on the street? Uh, there's no garages, but it's a one acre parcel. So there's more than adequate room for people to park their cars. Is it, is it available to build a garage on the property? Absolutely. That would have to be something that would be done afterwards or by the homeowner itself. No CCNR that says you cannot have a garage or an outbuilding or whatever, other than what the town codes are. No. Okay, so we've talked, one of the questions, comments was decreasing the water availability in the water table. You're still waiting for your test, I am assuming? Well, no, we, we've turned in all the um tests to the Department of Water uh, A D E Q. Um, and they issue what's called an assured water supply certificate that Will mentioned earlier. That's assurance of a hundred years water supply by the state. And it's according to the model that's um done by the town and by the county as far as the water all around. So it's a whole twenty acre parcel. It's the modeling of that parcel. And then they, I don't know how they do it because I'm not a water engineer, but uh they issue a certificate of a hundred year uh assurance of water. And that is through the state, not Through the state of Arizona. The county. And it's costly. It's about sixty-five thousand bucks. All right, um, there was another comment of increase on, of traffic and degrading the quality of Road One West. I can't address the issue of quality of Road One West. I can say that um the requirements for the ingress, egress and the cul-de-sac in the subdivision will be the town code and town specs. And it has to be for us to dedicate it to the town. So it will be pavement and it'll be, um, there'll be a, a turn lane at the side. We have put forty feet across the front of the property all the way across. And uh, it'll have a landscape strip and now, I'm sure that if the town engineer was here, we would ask him the question about will it accommodate a school bus, et cetera, et cetera? And every time I ask that question, he says yes. School bus, school bus and fire truck. Okay, I just thought I'd bring that up because it always winds up And, and the end of the cul-de-sac has to be certain uh diameter so they can turn around. Okay, one of the other comments was increasing density. Um, one acres is way better than a quarter acres. Um, concerns regarding decreasing home values.
Um, concerns regarding decreasing home values. That's kind of a subjective comment, I would suppose.
Well, I think that um, I mean. I guess I'd, I'd offer, I, I've talked to several people and a couple of guys actually called me on this, but anybody wants to come and look at one of our manufactured homes, I'd be glad to show it to you. If you haven't been one in a couple of years, uh, please come and look. Uh, we, it's not the old trailer house, if you will, from the past. Uh, we've got nine foot flat ceilings. We've got walk-in glass tile showers. Um, we build a nice home and it's a, it's a nice entry level. Um, there's a lot of stuff in the house. It's a nice house. Like I say, we've done over two hundred Cavco and Champion Homes in the last five years. Uh, the people are happy. Uh, the, uh, every one of them's gone up in value. In fact, some people over the last two or three years. Uh, got a hundred thousand dollars almost instantly in, in resale value. Um, like I say, anybody's welcome to see him. I'm glad to show him to you. You, you've got to think about it. When we talk about property values elsewhere, they're going up and they, they get a lot of people that can't even afford anything. If they come here, an entry level family is probably fifty percent of our clients. Uh, retired folks is probably the other fifty percent. When you look at a family of a husband and wife, both working, making four or five grand together. And we offer a payment around fourteen, fifteen hundred, sixteen hundred dollars. They can afford a new home on an acre ground and start their life. Otherwise, it isn't out there anywhere. It's not affordable anywhere. So we give them a nice opportunity, a nice home in the country like all of us like, like everybody who came to Chino for. It gives them the right to come in here and, and do the same thing everybody else did.
All right. Anybody else have any questions?
I have a question about the second point, increased flooding in surrounding neighborhoods. Could, could you clarify that?
So I, I'm gonna speak to that just because that's kind of some of the stuff I do for my business.
Okay.
The rules of the road are for drainage is it has to go in. The same place and go out the same place and the same volume that it has always had historically.
Correct.
And that's why you hire a civil engineer to design the drainage and grading. For this property and it has to be approved by the town engineer and the staff. So that it doesn't cause any more problems than it did before. And in a lot of cases, those problems are remediated, some not so much because everybody makes a mistake once in a while. But it has a very stiff checks and balances system. And it's all stamped and approved by an engineer who has to by state law, take full responsibility for his work.
Goodness, said it better.
Thank you.
Did that answer it?
Yes, thanks.
Anybody else?
Do you actually have the hundred year water certificate?
Uh, the application's been turned in for several months. We're in the last. Uh, they have a timeframe that they give you. It's like two hundred and forty days, I think it is, whatever. Uh, we're in the last couple of weeks of that timeframe. Um, we've satisfied all the requirements and turned in. Right now, we'll probably have the certificate within a week or two.
Yes, ma'am.
Would you be willing to move this from one acre lots to two acre lots to match the surrounding area?
Well, the uh, there's two acres on one side, but I don't know where that map is.
Can you bring up the plot plan that shows the one acre parcels up the street from there?
The houses to the north in the yellow are one acre parcels. So they're almost contiguous to ours except for. There's no sewer around there.
Eric, hold on, hold on. Let's just all talk up here and the public, please keep your comments to yourself. So there is one acre parcels just up the street on the other side of the beefway property.
Correct.
And there seemed like from the other picture we had, which was the aerial photo. That one acre section went for a fair ways up the road. If you could bring that up, maybe we could look at that.
Right, was, is this the one that you were talking about?
Yeah. So all the way up to the next road from the other north side of the beefway property, those are all one acre parcels. Is that what I'm seeing? All right. Thank you. Anybody else have any questions? All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, so I'm going to close the public hearing portion of this meeting on this item. And I would entertain a motion. For this item on the agenda.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion. I move to approve rezoning ZC two zero two two dash one zero as presented. Subject to the staff report and information provided during this hearing and the conditions of approval and attachment A.
Did that cover us on that?
It's, it's.
Okay. So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
One second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion on the commission? Any further discussion? Questions? All right. Dee Dee, I'd like to have a roll call vote, please.
Uh huh, thank you. Commissioners Moodyo?
Yes.
Commissioner Penn? Nay. Commissioner Somerville?
No.
Commissioner Switzer?
Nay.
Commissioner Matters?
No.
Vice Chair Passack?
Yes.
Chair Merritt?
Yes. Okay, so I didn't, I lost track of the count.
I think it was three or four.
So it failed.
Yes.
Okay, so all of the members that are voting no, um, if you would please state the reason that you did that so town council knows what we're thinking.
Okay, I guess I'm up first. I, I, I agree with whoever was saying that I think we should wait until. Um, we, the, we, 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 we do more work on the uh, the new town planning. Before we consider something like this, the size of this anyway, this project. And I'm also concerned with the water situation always. And no matter what the state or the county says, I think there's adequate uh, um, evidence. In the state and around the state that we are losing our water supply, one way or the other. And also of the, the road situation, it's a county road. And I don't think we have any kind of jurisdiction, do we, with fixing that county road or widening it? It's up to the county to do that, so. I think we have to wait and see what the county says about widening that road because the traffic I've. I drive that road and people drive down there, that road up and down that road. Um, seventy miles an hour sometimes, I'm sure. It's. So uh, I think there needs to be some, something done about that, widening that road. Okay?
I would like to see it stay AR five since it's right next door to the um, packing plant. Um, I know there's, there was gonna be a noise and odor disclosure agreement for the residents to sign. But those never last. That business has been in business in seventy-one, so they have rights too. Um. Just because you purchased an AR five property doesn't mean that it can be converted to SR. That's just the way it goes. When you purchase the property, you know that it's, it's zoned AR. Um. I know the county property to the west doesn't apply to the town of Chino Valley. But those home values would be affected with the manufactured home going in across the street. And it is all part of the same county and it does affect Chino and they are residents of Chino Valley, not the town of Chino Valley, but they are residents of Chino Valley. Um. Not affecting my deci- decision is water because it's out of our hands. That's the ADWR. But it is the elephant in the room. A hundred year water supply anywhere in this valley is a total crock. That's just my opinion, but uh, and it doesn't, didn't affect my decision at all, but it's the elephant in the room. Um. That would be my reason.
Thank you. Commissioner Matters?
Um, I know too many people out there that have to haul water that there's just. I said, I know too many properties out in that area that do not have water. Uh, next one property will have it, the next property doesn't. It just depends on where the granite goes through. Uh, I'd like to see if it's developed to be two acres and not one acre so that there's only half the wells, but. I just don't think there's water in that area for that many properties.
Okay, um, Missner? Yeah, you voted no, correct?
I did. I think we should wait. And see what. Some of the reports come back on the water level, I have to say. I agree that water is a big concern.
Yep, speak into the mic, please.
Water is a major concern in this area. We should wait and see particularly what that hundred year report has to say. Uh. Rapid congestion is another big consideration. And I think we should wait and review some of the reports that are out there. I don't think. Just because you want to divide. Property, it should automatically be done.
Thank you. All right, so we've satisfied that requirement. Are we going to postpone the first item on the agenda till another meeting?
Chair, I do not believe anybody for the Louiso Minor Subdivision is in the audience tonight.
Okay, so.
Continue to the next meeting.
We just, we need to make a motion.
February, we'll make it February. Okay.
So yeah, we will continue to the uh, planning and zoning meeting in February for that.
We need to make a motion and vote on that?
Yes.
Okay, so I would entertain a motion to move item FP twenty twenty-two dash zero five. To next month's zoning meeting due to the absence of the applicant.
I'm like that motion.
I second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi, anybody opposed? Motion's carried unanimously, so we'll see them next month. All right, so we're gonna move forward to item E, um, action items. It doesn't appear that we have any of those.
That is correct. He's just getting ready for the next item.
Okay, so item F, which is information items for the staff, council action on prior P and Z cases.
Chair, Vice Chair Commissioners, uh, we did have one item come through for planning or from planning and zoning last month to town council. It was for the conditional use permit for the equine rescue. It did pass council. Uh, however, they did modify the uh, time limit stipulation for them to achieve the physical improvements for the site. Um, we had originally gone through with one year, year, they uh, reduced that down to six months. And then they did keep the twenty head um, for animal large livestock for that property. Uh, the council did. Give the applicant the opportunity to. Make his case for a larger um, consideration, but uh, council felt that they, that case was not made, so they left it at twenty. Per the recommendation of uh, the commission.
That is all I have on that regard.
All right, thank you, Will.
I, I have a question for staff.
Sure.
Um, one of the conditions was that there was gonna be a monthly inspection.
So that one did not carry through. Um, we, it will be up to the applicant to make sure that it is done within six months.
No, the staff, I, I thought the area was going to be inspected monthly by staff.
As far as for code enforcement or just their progress?
Um, for code enforcement.
Code enforcement, absolutely.
The manure and.
Correct. Well, that, that absolutely will be as far, but as far as the physical improvements, the shade structures and whatnot, that'll be ultimately. There'll be a final inspection done by staff for that. Um, however, as far as the code complaints, absolutely, that'll be continued throughout the six months.
Right, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, I think that's it. Okay, so we got item, thank you, Will. Item F two is uh, any verbiage from the commission? The commissioners like to speak their piece on anything. Yeah. Good enough. All right, so we'll move forward to item F three. It's an educational presentation on solar farms.
So Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna hand out their um, the. The company's um, PowerPoint that you guys are going to see. They have committed that they will not be pushing a specific project because they're not allowed to do that. This is educational information only that you have requested. Because we brought a prior text amendment forward and there were a lot of questions. And so they reached back to Will and said, hey, we have some answers that we can share. And we said, that's great, but you cannot push a project. And so they've got information, they do have project information wrapped in it, but they. They need to not step over that line of pushing for a specific project. It's supposed to be information for you, for general purposes for solar.
Okay. Well, that sounds fair enough. Thank you.
Me one second, I'm gonna sign into my email real quick here and pull the PowerPoint off.
Mr. Chairman, I do have about ten other copies that I'm gonna put out on the table outside in case any of the public want.
Thank you.
Hello, Doug Carton, Director of Distributed Solar Development with Prospect fourteen. With me tonight, I have Sarah Elgerdawi, also of Prospect fourteen and Anthony uh. Griego of ERM, our consultant. Um, so we are here tonight representing the YA Jerome LLC Solar Facility, really just in a informational. Uh, respect. Uh, I will do my best to avoid getting too far into project specifics. Please feel free to flag me if I go too far. It was originally built as a slideshow, more geared around a single project. It's been rearranged a little to try to meet the, the intent here. Um, so as for, as for uh, who Prospect fourteen is, we are a national solar development company. Based out of Ardmore, Pennsylvania, which is just outside of Philadelphia. Uh, we were founded in twenty seventeen by three partners, uh, operate really all around uh, the nation. But primarily focused in PJM markets and Arizona markets, so PJM being around the. Uh, Pennsylvania and New Jersey, uh, Virginia, et cetera, area, um, and obviously APS being located here in Arizona. Why we're here today, uh, so we have had a project, specific project under development for a number of years. Uh, we are aware that you guys are undergoing an update to do your general plan. Oh, we wanted to make sure that you all were aware of what we have been doing. Um, make sure that you have an opportunity to ask any questions related to solar development, anything that you should be considering. As you undergo that process, I really just make sure that we're a good neighbor. Um, so we want to address any questions that you have, seek any suggestions that you have for us to do this better or do this right in your community. So it's for the importance of solar energy. Uh, I won't spend too much time on this. I will say that this is in the APS territory. So I would highlight that in twenty twenty, APS set a goal of providing a hundred percent of clean uh, energy to customers, a hundred percent clean energy by twenty fifty. Uh, so obviously, there's a tremendous amount of solar development and renewable energy development that would need to occur within the APS territory in order for that to occur. Now, the specific project that we are referencing here is located adjacent, the uh, old home manor growth area. Uh, the, the future growth areas within the current general plan uh, would encourage solar energy panels farm as a, as a use. Um, obviously, we will wait to see what the, the new general plan uh, has to say for the land use. Um, but based off of the current general plan, we would uh, say that this is a. A, a good uh, location for this use. The project, uh, this property in pers- in specific uh, was already permitted for a solar project back in twenty fourteen, very similarly. Uh, designed and cited, uh, the current project that we're working on is slightly larger. Uh, the property itself is in AR four zoning, uh, it's about seven hundred acres. Uh, the project that we're developing is roughly three to four hundred acres in total. So given that a project was previously approved, previous solar project in twenty fourteen, uh, we also were encouraged by that. Uh, of course, in undergoing the development and the investment associated. So why is it in Chino Valley? Well, really, the number one item I would say in citing solar development is that you need, uh, you need land that is adjacent infrastructure. And you need a willing landowner, right? So, uh, this is a, a new APS substation directly adjacent to the pro- uh, the project, actually on the corner of, of the property. And so the infrastructure is very well suited. It's in APS territory, which of course was driven by uh, APS' goals announced in twenty twenty, which is probably why previous project approved in twenty fourteen really didn't go anywhere. Uh, APS would be the primary market for any project in Arizona at this point in time. So in addition to uh, those items, this is a large continuous parcel, so not having to sit across numerous properties. Uh, it is surrounded by uh, what is mostly vacant land or uh, town owned, state owned land. Uh, there's also APS uh, training land immediately adjacent, uh, where they actually do training on electrical infrastructure. Uh, so it's really very well suited to the surrounding area. And of course, naturally, the uh, the Arizona sun uh, yields quite high production values for solar as well. This one I will uh, breeze over just because it is a little project specific. Um, it consists of, uh, like I said, three to four hundred acres, uh, you can see the general vicinity map here. Um, it is adjacent, the old home manor uh, growth area. Again, uh, just a little bit more project specific, but just to give you a sense of really what we have into this and the time and energy spent. Uh, you can see that we've started this process back in twenty twenty with APS, so it is a lengthy process. We are just now nearing the stage at which we would receive and sign the interconnection agreements and make deposits on that. Um, so actually, I believe we have the interconnection agreement in hand, next step is uh, to sign and make the deposit. So that will be done uh, by the end of this month. At that point in time, we obviously are pretty well committed to a project, um, and would like to ensure the success of that anyway possible. Now, we did run visual simulations for this property. You can see uh, the locations of those visual simulations noted here, KOP two, KOP four, KOP seven. KOP seven's a scenic trail uh, that we assume would be frequently. Are frequented by, by residents in the area. Um, but there was actually no visibility from that area, so it is not featured in this analysis, so it's just not visible. You'll even see that at KOP two, which is very close, uh, you know, closer than any nearby residents. Uh, it's near impossible to discern the facility at that distance. KOP four, which is a, a good representative view of solar generally. Uh, this is right at the corner of the property itself, the subject property that we'd be cited on. Uh, this reference is the, the solar, the design itself, and it shows a, an agricultural fence, which we would encourage. Um, as a standard within uh, any ordinance that, that you may pass. We often see chain link as a requirement, and there's really no need from a solar development perspective to have chain link surrounding facility. It just kind of makes it industrial feeling, so we often.
Question for you? These panels, are they, uh, if livestock were wandering around in mon- in amongst those panels, are they suitable for that or no?
Um, depending on the livestock, yes.
In Arizona, that would be cows.
Yeah, no, cows like to bump up against things, my, my understanding. Um, and that is detrimental to the systems, the racking ability for them to function, so I think they're a little too destructive for.
But you do have a fence around the property.
They do have a fence, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, National Electrical Code requires a seven foot fence surrounding electric, uh, solar facilities. So it would be a seven foot fence, we would typically do a six foot ag fence and then uh, a footed barbed wire.
Okay, sorry to interrupt you.
Oh, no problem. So as you can see, KOP four at the nearest location, actually on the, the subject property is where we actually have visibility of this. Um, we zoom into that, get a just a little better view of representation there. Uh, but largely no visual impacts outside of the, the subject property. So I believe one of the things that had come up uh, repeatedly in the November discussion on solar development was just about the benefits to the town. Uh, so one of the things I would say about solar development is that it is a temporary land use. Uh, I think it's an important factor to consider when you're making a general plan. And how you want it to be addressed within your land use planning is that this is a temporary land use. So, um, I try to discourage uh, permanent changes to, to zoning or otherwise to accommodate a temporary use. Obviously, that is not for me to decide, but uh, let me just say, generally speaking, we consider it a temporary use. Um, so let, just a good thing to consider in your land use. Development. Uh, this would contribute to the renewable energy goals of APS to provide a hundred percent clean energy. Um, the energy storage component would also uh. Support grid reliability, really, energy storage is one of the, the best ways that we can support grid reliability. Um, and particularly, you know, with greater storms, uh, grid reliability is becoming a, a big issue. Direct and indirect capital investment as well as community improvement or, um, yeah, community improvements such as road upgrades, uh, property taxes. And then uh, jobs really, though, construction jobs primarily, we don't really have a lot of um, permanent jobs created from solar facilities locally. But we would use local uh, electricians to service or um, local landscaping to address needs on the site. And otherwise, I am here to have, here to answer any questions you may have. Sorry.
Anybody have questions?
I have one. What's your timeframe consideration for temporary land use?
Uh, well, uh, typically you'd say, well, actually, we're, we're starting to grow. I'd say uh, typically projects were thirty-five year life, we're now seeing that move to a forty year life on average. Uh, just as kind of a standard project assumption.
Not too temporary.
One's lifetime.
Depends on your definition, it's not, not permanent.
I have a question. Uh, will the uh, solar farm? I guess you call it a solar farm, is that, or is that what you call it?
I, I think that's fair.
Okay, well, we'll keep up with the um, latest uh, photovoltaic technology, or it'll just be. You know, just one, a one-time uh, technology that, that, that uh, the panels and. You know, there's all kinds of new stuff that's being developed.
Yeah.
Films and things like that, so will you be keeping up with that or what?
Um, if you mean replacements during the project lifecycle, that's really something I could only really theorize on. I would, I certainly have theories, I don't know if they're applicable.
Well, they're always upgrading the technology, yeah.
But, but yeah, I mean, it, the, the assumption is that modules are good for the life of a project when you build it. Um, inverters are assumed to be replaced basically mid lifecycle.
Okay, and also will you be hiring local people to uh, monitor the, you know, the safety of the area, for instance, you know, because. There's always somebody that's going to try to, you know, break in uh, into the facility uh, and cause some sort of damage. We have to consider that in this day and age, because there's all kinds of crazy people out there that. That like to destroy things, uh, will you be hiring adequate uh? Uh, monitoring of this, like the police or a guard or something like that?
There'd be no onsite security or guard per se, uh, but we do monitor the systems twenty-four seven. Uh, so they really monitor their out of control rooms, uh, based off of various data acquisition systems on site to ensure that we can keep the system operating.
So you have cameras and things like that too?
Uh, you don't always see cameras, but if we, if there was a security concern, you probably would. Put it that way, but cameras are easily retrofit afterwards, so we normally don't see cameras put up right away. We normally see cameras installed later on if we're occur, if, if we see vandalism and.
So the town already has a solar farm uh, uh, and around, is there, has there been, to your knowledge, a bunch of vandalism with it?
Chair, uh, members of the commission, I, I, at this point, I don't believe so, but I, I would not be aware.
It'd be just be interesting. So at the end of the lifecycle, do you refurbish or just tear it down and abandon it?
Well, I, I can only really theorize again, but I will say that um, at this point in time, there is a growing uh, secondary market for used modules. Um, particularly overseas, reality is solar panel, as long as it produces power, is still worth something, right? That's where somebody, something to someone, it might not be a good investment grade product at a certain point in its life. Um, but it's valuable to somebody and it creates power. So what we're primarily seeing is that uh, there is a growing reuse um, industry for solar modules. And we would most likely see that as long as those modules were not damaged, um, and that's the reason that they're being taken down. That they would uh, most likely be resold on a secondary market.
I didn't ask the question properly. Will you continue to refurbish the site so it would be? Take the old panels out, put new panels in at the end of the lifecycle, or would you put it back into this?
That, that I can only theorize on, but I, i- if it were my investment, I would not let it go easily. I would be inclined to replace and extend agreements, um, but that's, that's my take on that.
Thank you. Anybody else have question?
Yeah, um, assuming the land's privately owned. Is there any other proposals for benefits to the town at Chino Valley? So the town of Chino Valley doesn't see any property tax revenue, so that's, that's a moot point. It was good for the county, but it's, doesn't affect the town of Chino Valley. So is there any other way for the town to benefit other than a road improvement with this whole large project?
Uh, well, I think we are certainly open to uh, you know, discussion on how we can support the community.
Cents an hour, kilowatt hour.
I was just gonna bring that up.
That would, that would definitely support quite a bit.
It's only two cents. Hey, it's our land. Actually, it's not our land, it's somebody else's.
Privately owned, so that's another thing, but, you know.
Yeah, I mean, that is.
It was town land, that was another story, because then you'd be leasing from the town, so another benefit, but.
But yeah, we are very open to uh, to that discussion and, and just understanding how we can support the community. You, I think roads is what we've heard as kind of a repeat concern here. Um, and I think if there's a way that we can help uh, fund some of those efforts, that, that's something we, we would certainly be open to.
Would you be hooking into the um, increasingly needed um? Electric car charging stations, will you be providing some of that or?
Uh, we wouldn't have any charging stations ourselves, um, but certainly this type of project would, would better support that infrastructure in the future. I mean, really, there's, there's really no downsides to having more local power. Uh, in terms of a grid resiliency uh, standpoint, um, ensuring that we have the most reliable and stable grid available. So, you know, the more that we have to send power from distant plants, that introduces a lot of risk in making sure that power gets to us, right?
But there is.
And it has to travel along just.
There is no guarantee that this power will even stay in the state.
Well, I would say that um. The, the transactions of power and how power is assigned to entities within this nation is purely on paper. Power goes to the nearest load. Uh, so in terms of a real life impact, there's a benefit to having that generation near the load. And so if you plan on using power, it is beneficial to have.
So this would be part of the local grid then, is that right?
Exactly, right, I mean, it might, I, we, it is not currently contracted to anyone, so I can't say it's going to X party or this individual. Um, but that is truly just a, a financial transaction on paper.
Who decides that? APS, the power, if, part of federal government?
It really depends on where you operate, uh, so in Arizona, there's not a regional market. Uh, so one of our primary markets is PJM, which is a, a regional uh, market. So really, anyone can sell wholesale power into that. Um, right now, there's no mechanism within Arizona for somebody to just sell power. Um, so you do need to contract it, right? So, so the number one uh, place that you would go to is APS, right? You're already in their, their grid, um, they're the natural entity that you go to. Um, so while we are not contracted with anyone, we are in ongoing discussions with APS. What you primarily see for development in, in Arizona, at least on a utility scale basis uh, to date. Has been much larger facilities that actually sell into Cal ISO and wheel power through APS, basically pay a small fee to APS in order to sell the Cal ISO. Um, there is no intent to do that with this project. This project is, is intended to be sold to APS, assuming we can make a deal.
Any other questions? Thank you for your information.
You're welcome. Thank you for the time.
So we're gonna move forward to F four, which is an opportunity for the public to speak about any item on their mind. Except what has been on the agenda tonight. We cannot answer questions, we can only direct somebody to help you out. You'll have three minutes. Same rules as before, and you'll raise your hand, I'll call you, you can step up to the podium. State your name and ask the question or yell or scream or do whatever you're gonna do politely. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair of Commission, uh, and you can stop me if I'm wrong, I'm gonna, I'm gonna address something that we spoke about in the past. It does kind of coincide with something that happened tonight, but this is, this has been old business. Uh, there's, there's been a couple of private companies for the past couple of years. Why Chino, I don't know. Uh, been looking into uh. When they're coming to our community and rezoning, you know. Taking a lot of our open land, I think if, 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 if my memory is correct, I think it's six hundred and forty acre parcels, up to twenty-two hundred acre parcels. There were a couple of uh, companies that were in the past looking to use uh, to build uh, solar farms out here in the town of Chino Valley. And I don't want to talk about, like, like you said, we can't talk about anything that was, that was talked about tonight, but I'm just wondering about the crack in the dam kind of thing. You know, uh, uh. Yeah, I just uh. You know, I, I, I just came back. From uh, Los Angeles, unfortunately, a couple of days ago, in driving down the I-ten corridor, especially just uh. Uh, just west of Blythe. Uh, there's a lot of companies building a lot of large solar farms out there, and it makes sense, because I mean, the weather's better. And uh, the sun shines year round there, and uh, there's nothing out there except for a state prison. And uh. But I, like I said, it's, it really, I'm really not addressing anything tonight, I'm just addressing. There, 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 we, we spoke about this in the past with other companies coming into the town of Chino Valley, and I'm almost sure that, that the uh. The parcels were six hundred and forty, up to twenty-two hundred acres, and I mean. I mean, if I was in business, I mean, go big, right? I'm gonna come out here, I'm not gonna do six forty, I'm gonna do twenty-two hundred if I can. And uh, that's just my concern, is just uh, the crack in the dam, you know, the foot in the door kind of thing. And just uh, I'm just wondering why here? And why not on the forty corridor or down on the ten, I mean, there's nothing, I mean, I, I drive it all the time, and there's nothing out there, weather's better. Uh, less snow, I know we don't have a lot of snowfall here anyway, except for tonight. So anyway, thank you very much for my time.
Bet, thank you. Anybody else?
Yes, ma'am.
Gotta step up and talk into the microphone.
Say thank you again to all of you for considering everything that we've talked about tonight as residents of the area. Um, we have lived here thirty-one years, so we've watched a lot of changes in all of Yabba Baygany. And we knew it because we came from Southern California, like so many of my clients are, and. They are coming here for reasons that we all love and enjoy the, the lifestyle, trying to keep it a small town feeling, but also trying to grow. trying to grow with the proper way of growth. So my my question to, and I know it's, I'm not supposed to talk about what happened tonight, but on this solar farm issue, do I understand it correctly? Is it a leasehold situation that we're talking about, and this gentleman was coming up tonight to introduce himself as a contractor to APS, more or less to 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 establish on privately owned property, a lease? Or is this a an actual sale of a property that the town will be looking at in terms of potential private property owners as we're as as he was just explaining that they would then be in in a position to come to the council, ask for, let's say you own a section of land, you've got six hundred and forty acres out there doing nothing but grazing cows on it. Are you? Are you going to sort of adopt that into this new twenty forty plan? Because I just, I I just got through rereading the fourteen plan. I know that's what you guys are kind of under and you're planning for this this next go. And there's not much out there on the website about that. So we don't really know what changes will really take place from fourteen to that. But does that does that seem like something that we should expect that that there would be in these mixed used areas, a desire to go to alternative energy sources? I mean, is it, does that seem like a fair question?
Fair question. We can answer right now.
Okay, all right. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you again for being here and serving.
Anybody else? All right, I'm gonna close that portion of the meeting. What I would suggest, anybody that had a question about this stuff in this last portion of the meeting, town staff is always available and happy to answer any questions that they can. To please contact them and visit with them. They can explain stuff. They just can't do it here in this meeting because of the rules. So please give them a call, talk to them. They're, in my experience, they're very eager to help out. Okay, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for being polite and putting up with it.
Good idea. So many other ways they can do this.